Welcome to the meeting of the Holyoke School Committee. It is 6:15 PM. Ms. LaFon, roll call, please.
President.
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 Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
So, really quick, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being shown live on the city's community TV channel. And before we go any further, I'm sure many are aware of what's happening in La Isla del Encanto, Puerto Rico. The earthquakes, how it's affecting many of our residents' families, friends. Many of our students are being impacted because of their families that they have over there. And so I'd like to take this moment of, this moment to have a s- moment of silence. I said "moment" too many times, so for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. Liz, anyone for public discussion? None? Okay. So, we're gonna start off this evening with the student showcase from Peck School.
So, we're gonna invite up Principal Ms. Grave Line to the front with, and she has a whole host of students with her, and family members, and I see Dean Santiago, where are you Dean? Right here, who's the parent engagement coordinator at Peck School. I have to thank Peck for, they were asked not too long ago to be our showcase today, and they turned this around really quickly with a full presentation. So, I want to invite Peck School up to the front, so they can share the good work that's happening on their campus.
Good evening, members of the committee. I'm really excited to be here, albeit a last-minute notice. We're really psyched to show off the good work that we've been doing at Peck. I have lots of friends here who are really excited to share the work that we've been doing with Summit Learning, which is the approach to learning that we take at Peck. We also have been the recipients of the Vils Grant, which means that all of our middle school students have an awesome iPad, which Genesis will show off to you. And we're also gonna talk a little bit about our art program here at Peck. And I'm also gonna remind my friends that they need to speak loud and proud into this microphone, so that the people on, on the other side of the camera, home watching you, because you guys are now movie stars or rock stars, can hear your voices, okay? Okay, so who are we? We have Genesis Devila, one of our lovely eighth-grade friends. We have Julio Rivera, seventh grade. We have Ethan Mateo, this tall guy behind me. We have Lyska Rodriguez, to my right. And we have Smilene Matos Gonzalez, right to my left. Okay, so at Peck, we have core values. Our core values are respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. They are the values that drive everything that we do throughout the school day. A few things that make our school awesome are the Innovative Learning Grant that we got from Verizon, Summit Learning. And again, we have an awesome, amazing art teacher that couldn't make it today. Her name is Ms. Vanessa Kirby. Genesis refers to her as her art mom. And we have a really great art program at Peck. So, we have the best artists. Here's a couple of examples of Genesis's amazing work, and she's gonna come up and tell you a little bit about it.
So, I've been drawing since kindergarten, basically. And most of my artwork is inspired by my mom. And... Movies, basically. My family members and people that I look up to. That's basically it.
Okay, so at Peck, through the use of our iPads, we use technology in our daily learning. Genesis is gonna tell you the first line about how we use technology in our daily learning. You mean I don't have to crouch down? Like, come on, I was doing awesome. Alright, we can pass the mic now. Oh, this is better, I freed 'em. Alright, Genesis, start us off.
Over thirty-eight, over, over thirty-eight percent, oh, eighty-three percent of our middle school students have an iPad with a data plan, thanks to Verizon and Digital Promise.
We use iPads in class to complete exit ticket, exit tickets, and engage in reviews and research topics for our classes.
The iPads are also giving us access to the Summit Online Learning Platform, both at school and at home.
We are learning about how to be responsible digital citizens and use technology to make our changes in our world.
We also have the opportunity to engage in STEM-related activities and about, and learn about STEM-related careers as we prepare for high school.
Great, and then we're also learning the skills and habits associated with lifelong learning and self-directed success through the Summit Learning curriculum.
Academic tenacity. I look beyond short-term concerns and withstand challenges to persevere towards long-term academic goals.
Curiosity. I've taken an interest in a wild variety of topics and desire, deep and complete understanding of couple topics.
Growth mindset. I can grow my abilities and my comp- with effort. I'm not done learning and growing.
Self-direction. I have desired outcome, backwards plan, take action, and evaluate the effectiveness of my choices and make adjustments to move towards my goals.
Self-awareness. I recognize my own emotions and thoughts and see how might they influence my behaviors and impact others.
Alright, so really quickly, I just wanted to also say that the kiddos that are standing up here were nominated by their teachers. So, I sent an email out to staff, said we had this incredible opportunity, and asked them for some names. And so these are the kiddos that were chosen and nominated by their teachers to come speak in front of you folks tonight. So, really, really proud of them. So, we want to say thank you for the opportunity. And also are happy to answer any questions you have for us.
Anyone have any questions? Just out of curiosity, what's an exit ticket?
Oh, who wants it?
It's basically your ticket to get, basically, to go to your next class. If you don't finish it, then you have to stay and basically finish it. Basically, your ticket out.
It also is like a show what you know at the end of the class.
I thought that you couldn't leave the classroom to go to your next class, because you didn't finish the first one, but okay.
Well, you know, we have really high expectations, and we make sure that the kids do all of their work in class, so kind of.
Can, can one of you describe what Summit Learning is?
Summit Learning is an online platform which we can take assessments on and see our grades through, and show what basically what we know.
Can I ask a question about the, you seem to know it real well. When you, can you tell me about that dashboard where you can see like your progress? And there's a line, can you tell me like how that help? What does that, what does that tell you when you can?
You can basically like encourage yourself to get, put your grade up more, because if you're like a little bit down, you can like be encouraged to be up more, like an A or B.
But does it tell you if you're on track, off track?
It tells you if you're off, if you're on track or on track.
In each subject area?
Yeah.
And can you, can you see that at home?
Yeah.
And your parents could see it at home, too?
Yep.
Do you show your parents?
Sometimes.
Is it only the times that you're on track that you're showing it, out of curiosity?
Maybe.
Mr. Kershan?
Is that, is that part of the whole, is the whole school on that? Or just seventh and eighth grade, or what's the situation with that?
So, historically, it started off in one cohort in sixth grade. We expanded it to middle school, and then this last year expanded it in grades four through eight.
Okay, so it's four through eight.
It was formerly called P3, too, when we first introduced it. You may remember like four years ago. But we now, we now are using the name that they use nationally, which is Summit Learning. But it's, so, but it did start initially, it just middle, six, it was just seventh.
It was one group of sixth graders, and then they expanded it to the middle school at large. And now, this last year, we expanded it in grades four through eight.
How, do teachers like using it as well? I mean, it's dated, gotta be very data-driven, you know? And you find that the teachers participate and, and I, you know, I kind of like, that's like kind of a thing we talk about a lot here, is trying to get schools on to a system that everybody participates in, and also unfortunately, like parents, too. I really think that's important, but...
Certainly, yeah, the teachers really love it. It took a while for everybody to like fully embrace it, right? But there's lots of professional development opportunities. So, teachers go to a summit in the fall, the spring, and in the summer, to get lots of professional development around it. What I really love about Summit, and what the teachers like about it, is it's real-time data. So, you can log in any minute of the day and find out exactly where the kids are at, what they need work on. And there's a lot of also opportunities, like my friend was saying, to push yourself and exceed what you ever thought was possible, or to catch up on things that you need work on. There's also a really critical component to Summit Learning, which I consider critical, is mentoring. So, every student has a mentor. They have a teacher who's their champion, and they talk about not just the content of the curriculum, but how to be a lifelong learner, sort of like the soft skills around that.
Mr. Collmore.
The art pictures I saw up there, was that just by, done by one student or other students?
It was drawn by me.
Very, very nice.
Thank you.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
How do you pick who's going to be in art? Do they volunteer, or you have a program just for art also?
We have an art program, but all of the students at Peck have art. It's pretty amazing.
Can I just ask, so we, you guys all have iPads, right? How, how, it made me a little worried, right? Giving middle schoolers iPads, right? How's that going? Are people using it for the right reason, reasons? And are, do you feel like people are ta- taking good responsibility of the devices?
Yes, people take good responsibility, and they use it for the right reasons. We mostly use them for the Summit Learning Program and other resources that we might need for it.
And are they breaking a lot, or are they?
They're all fine.
All fine? Okay.
We've had very little damage, which I was actually, as a school leader, surprised and nervous about, right? But what's really cool is that the kids have their own iPad. It's something that is theirs, that they have ownership of, and that they get to take home and use at home, which is also pretty cool.
Yeah, so STEM and Peck are the two schools, but not, not the fourth and fifth graders at Peck. Six, seventh, and eighth, and then the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at STEM each have their own iPads. And it's our first effort as a district to have one-to-one. And we're using them to, we're not using you, but we are learning from you in this first year, as whether this is something we want to do across the district, and at high, and eventually at the high school level as well.
We were the chosen ones, right?
That's right.
Any other questions?
Doctor, sorry, just out of clarification, so the P3 now just expanded to where it's the whole, six to eight, is kind of like your P3.
Four through eight.
Four through eight.
Yeah, it's, the name changed, but the model didn't change, so don't get confused. We just decided to go with a name, the national name Summit Learning, so that it wouldn't be confusing to people.
Well, thank you guys so much for coming.
Did you want to get a picture?
Thank you for having us, yes, we would love pictures. I know of one mother in particular that would like a picture.
Strike a pose. Are you gonna take a picture?
What a great kid. Very outspoken, that's good.
Great sweetheart, how are you? Don't worry, I'll hug you when I see you at the store. I'm doing wonderful. Thank you. Someone was gave that to me. How you doing sweetheart? I'll see you at the store. Oh, he's beautiful. Very handsome, nice to meet you sweet. Mucho gusto, mi amor.
We watch photos here.
Alex is the man. I'm gonna pass it over to you. Thank you, guys. And now I'm gonna pass it on over to Mr. Sheen.
Thank you. So, I have a presentation to make, and I'm gonna speak here first, and then I'll invite up our person for the presentation. So, as many of you know, and I have a little history lesson here, too. Massachusetts passed a comprehensive education reform in 1993. It changed the ways that education works here in the Commonwealth, including the funding model. And, and things were good. Massachusetts became first in the nation. We, at the time, adequately funded many of our schools across the state, and it was a big hope for our students back in 1993. Well, things changed, society changed, the world changed, and education changed. And we had to start begging for more money to educate our students. And our urban centers were hit hard through different funding mechanisms around charter schools, and regional schools were hit hard, because regional transportation was never fully funded, and special ed costs weren't funded appropriately. And we fought hard with the legislature for many, many years to update that. And we saw many road bumps along the way. But luckily, this year, we were very fortunate to have a brave and courageous team of legislators that worked hard to get the Student Opportunity Act passed. And no one else could get it done. And we here in Holyoke are fortunate that one of those people that really championed the effort for the Student Opportunity Act and what we had, and really put it all out on the line, is our own state rep, Aaron Vega. He was joined with Representative Keefe out of the Worcester area, and on the senate side, Senator Sonia Chang Diaz, who worked very hard for many years. And I know that we, as a school committee, are grateful, and the Hoyoke Public Schools are grateful for the money that's gonna be coming into Hoyoke, but I thought it would be appropriate for us to recognize Representative Vega for his hard work. And he's here today with his wife Deborah and son, Odin. And I'm gonna invite any of them that want to come up. What's on here? Because I think it's important. So, the Hoyoke School Committee and Hoyoke Public Schools recognizes State Representative Aaron Vega. For his leadership on the Student Opportunity Act, his courage, passion, and dedication will ensure that the youth of Hoyoke and of the Commonwealth receive high-quality education they deserve. And we added in a quote in here from Theodore Roosevelt. "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing." And I think that's something that means a lot with this. And I can't tell you how appreciative I am for what you've done on this. Having also served as the State Association School Committee President, we worked hard together on this, and just to see this happen and get to say it was my rep who really did this, so, thank you.
Well, hot mic. Well, thank you, you know, deeply, we don't do this work to get plaques and awards, but it does feel nice to get recognized for putting it all on the line. So, first, congratulations to all of you on your reelection and your election, so welcome. And I would say that first and foremost, this wasn't done by myself. There was, as Devin mentioned, other reps involved, some of my colleagues. But really, Devin and Dennis Burks were two of the people, really, early on when I was elected, really brought this issue to me about education funding. So, the three quick things, three quick things I would say. I would give a shout-out to my colleagues, the Black Latino Caucus, the Progressive Caucus, and the Gateway Saints Caucus. These three groups really came together and focused on the one big issue around education, around Chapter 70, which was the low-income economically disadvantaged funding line. And that was always the big difference, and we really got the House to step up and do what needed to be done. The second thing I would say is that for a lot of my colleagues, and a lot of people, they've called this like a game changer. Jeez, this guy's in charge. I don't think this is a game changer for Hoyoke, because two things. I think that this is money that's been due to us for decades. This cities like Hoyoke and Springfield and Worcester and Fall River, and our Gateway Saints have been underfunded drastically, and the results have shown how that affects education abilities in our district and our teachers, and give them the supports they need. It's not the cure-all, there are other issues, of course, but funding is a major issue. So, for me, I see this as our ability now with all of you to do what we know works, to get things done, to expand pre-K, full day, to expand dual language, to expand STEM, to incorporate arts, to have all the good things that Ian White, for sure, that's already going on. But to keep doing what you're already doing, and stop relying on, relying so much on grants. Don't quote me exactly, and I know we have the numbers back, you know, we'll see how things play out, but estimates, you know, if you look at, if you look at...
Where did everybody go?
Everybody left. This is a seven-year implementation, and if you looked at the status quo, in seven years, Hoyoke would stand to get about $109 million in Chapter 70 for school funding. This puts us at about $147 million. So, this is a significant amount of money that we can do some great things with. And the last thing I would say, again, thank you to all of you, is that, as we mentioned, this doesn't fix everything. We still have other issues to attend to, especially out-of-district placements, transportation, and other issues. But I think that this has been a huge step for the legislature, and again, to recognize that in 1993, what we did for education, other states still have not followed our lead. And again, we've doubled down and made sure that education is a priority for everybody in the Commonwealth, no matter where you're from, because all of us have said it one time or another, where you're born and your zip code shouldn't matter, your opportunities, but we know damn well it does. And we've got to fix that, and that's what this tries to do. So, thank you to all of you, keep up the great work, looking forward to working with you for the next year or more. Alright, enjoy the rest of your evening.
One thing I forgot to mention, too, is the other huge thing that Aaron secured for all of us, that I will say has probably been a huge legacy project, I think, for everyone in the Commonwealth, is actually Breakfast After the Bell. And I think that whereas the Student Opportunity Act is big, I think that this leadership on Breakfast After the Bell, I mean, it's a huge program, not only for Hoyoke, but for everyone. So, it's always looking out for our students who need it the most.
For the next showcase. Ian, you know, we need Ian White.
This is Ronnie's 41st year serving on the school committee. And many more years serving the city, because he was a firefighter before that, so just as a public servant, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Collmore. So, we were gonna move on to student reports, but they're not here with us this evening, so we're gonna go ahead and move on into educator preparation and recruitment pipelines.
Yeah, so I just want to introduce our Chief of Talent, Beth Gage, and our lead star recruiter, Kelly Curran, who are going to share a little bit about our efforts to recruit and retain effective educators in the Hoyoke Public Schools. You do know that we just received a grant, a diversification grant, from the Department of Education. They're gonna talk a little bit about that. I do just want to acknowledge that over the last four years, we've really shifted from doing a lot of outside recruiting to wanting to, developing programs that are incentivizing people that are already in our system and in our community to take on educator roles in the Hoyoke Public Schools. So, paraprofessionals, recent college grads who are from the community, and even some of our own teachers that maybe don't have their masters, have a bachelor's, but need to get their certification and their masters. And so we, we now have about as robust a suite of options available to educators who want to teach in the Hoyoke Public Schools. We, it's no secret, we have, we have significant turnover every year as a school system. While we've seen some improvements, I, no one is satisfied with our level of retention. I don't want to, I'm concerned. I do think it's something the school system's going to have to continue to grapple with for, for a while. It's a challenging place to work. We have longer hours, the work, there's intensity in the work. But that doesn't mean we can't get better. And so we are moving towards what I think is the incentivizing of our current educators to take the next step in their careers. And I think you've heard me say, like, the best, I think, the best way we're gonna be able to retain more educators is to get people who are really committed to the city to come teach in our schools. And some of those people, many of those people, I should say, are paraprofessionals who are working in our schools every day. That, that I've, it took me a couple of years to get to that place, but I really believe that the future of the teaching force here is by incentivizing on folks who have given their whole career... who have given their whole careers, they have children in the school system, who want to be in our schools, and incentivizing them to get their bachelor's and come back to teach. Well, some of them already have their bachelor's in our powers, but many of them don't. And how do we figure out pipelines for them? And then how do we take our students, our current students, and bring them back to the community? I think that's the best chance, the best option we have for improving our retention. And I, so what I want to do is have Beth and Kelly give you what I think is the most comprehensive look at all the pipelines that we have. About three weeks ago, they presented this to principals. Our principals, I think, were surprised to see all the options in one place, because I don't even think, I don't know that we were doing the best job of showing or articulating the menu that we now offer people. And then we did a presentation for the central office staff, who are often, many people, many of them live in the community, and they interface with folks, and they were surprised, wow, we offer this much. So I don't think we've done a good enough job telling our story. So this is an effort to really tell the story and let you answer, ask questions about what we offer to people. So with that, I'm going to shut my mouth, Beth, you are up.
So, yeah, just echoing everything Steve said. I think particularly for myself and Kelly, this year, we have been participating in the state's diversity network, where we also collaborate with Mark Swager and Stephen Mogel. And we kind of had this aha moment that, like, we just haven't done a very good job about training the public about what is available in Hoyoke for becoming an educator in the district. So, we would invite you guys to just really look at this with the lens of like, do I know someone who could enter into one of these pipelines and help us to promote them here in Hoyoke? So just to start with, we're going to look at our vision. I think you all have seen this before, but our vision for talent is to attract, select, develop, and retain highly effective educators who demonstrate a commitment to the HPS values and have a significant impact on students' success. We are excited that this is our first year that we've launched our diversity and equity commitment website. So there is a link on the HR page where you can really get a general overview of everything you're going to hear today. In addition, you'll also see a few additional pipelines that we have for leadership development on there as well. But it is, it's just speaking to some of the work that we've been doing in human resources and really across the district with the schools. I'm going to start by presenting our pipelines for candidates with a bachelor's degree. This is where we've spent the majority of our time developing pipelines into teaching, just knowing the urgency that we need people now, so the shortest pathway to getting certified educators. To start with, really difficult to see on the screen, hopefully it's a little clearer in your package, but this is the Urban Teacher Pathway, which was established in 2015. This is our longest-established pathway in the district, and we're now recruiting for our sixth cohort, is that right Kelly? Sixth cohort, so that application process, application and selection process is currently happening. And that cohort will begin in the summer and be in the classroom this fall. So we're really excited about that. This is a partnership that we have with Mount Hoyoke, they've been a really supportive partner. It was really designed to address our critical shortage areas, special education and ELL. This is unique in the sense that you actually come out with two certifications in this program. So you have to choose either special education or ELL, but then you get to choose an additional license in a general content area. So you get a master's degree and two certifications, and it's a two-year program. As I mentioned, you start right away in the classroom. We do start on a waiver, and then you get your initial license following the program.
Yes, so just to add, like, teachers like many of you know, Kate O'Donnell and Bevyn Brunel, they participated in, I mean, they've been in front of us, many of you know who they are. They were part of the original cohort, I think, right? Was that the first cohort, and now we're up to six?
Yeah, so with that, we've opened this to anybody in the district who has a bachelor's degree, particularly paraprofessionals and educators on a waiver. So that's who's eligible for this program. You do have to be a current HPS employee to qualify for the program. The benefits of the program is that you actually get 50% off your tuition at Mount Hoyoke. And they also help support candidates through applying for grants and things like that. The Teach Grant is $7,000, that's the big one that they provide a lot of support with. Additionally, this might vary year to year, but historically Hoyoke has contributed an additional $3,000 towards their tuition for a three-year commitment after completion of the program. And then additionally, this program is affiliated with the Paradigm Shift, who can help candidates pass the MTELS, they have waivers, so they have vouchers so that people don't have to pay to take the MTELS, and they provide coaching and mentoring for those who struggle to take the test.
Kelly, anything you want to add to that before we move on?
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the Teach Western Mass program. This is for candidates who also have a bachelor's degree and do not hold a certification. We currently offer ESL Special Education and Middle School Math certification through this program. It is a little, it's an alternative pathway that's accelerated. With that being said, it gets you initial certification in one of those content areas. It does not get you the master's degree, but they do have an affiliation with AIC to, for people to complete their master's degree. So there is a little bit of a cost, but they are 60% of the way, is that correct Kelly? Yes, 60% of the way towards their master's degree after completion of the program. Again, one of the big benefits of that program is that it is accelerated. So they will start coursework this summer. There is an application that actually goes directly through Teach Western Mass. Anybody can apply to that nationally. However, we're really launching a campaign for internal candidates to apply for it this year. This is really the first year we've focused on internal candidates for these programs, and we're working to develop information sessions for our candidates who already have a bachelor's degree. Cost of the program is $11,000 in total. $4,000 of that is the district's responsibility, and then $7,000 is the participants' responsibility. We are happy to announce that with the Teacher Diversification Grant, we are able to award 17 residents a scholarship to cover the cost in full with a commitment to Hoyoke. So that was just awarded to us this year, and we're really excited about that.
So if you know anyone, let us know.
Yes.
Okay, I think that brings us to our...
And I would just add to that, it's like when we say, it's, we want, it could also be people who live in Hoyoke or not in the system right now, but have always thought about teaching and want to do an accelerated, you know, and you know that would be great with kids. This is a really accelerated way to get into the classroom and, and, and be on the path towards certification. So again, if you know folks that are in the community that are likely to stick with us, this would be a great option for them.
Right, and now would be a great time, because this money is not guaranteed, like, next year or the following year, we got a grant and we have to spend it this year, so. Mr. Krishan?
I just had a quick question, it's like, for the Mount Hoyoke, the Urban Teacher Pathway Program on the first, first page, do you have figures that, you know, it's 50% off of the tuition, what is the tuition?
We do have those figures, not with us, but it, it comes down to only a couple thousand dollars for your master's. It depends on if somebody wants one certification, two certifications, where they're at, when they go. Like, if they have a bachelor's degree, that's not, like, if they're going to be a math teacher and their bachelor's degree has no math content, they might have to take a few extra courses in math. So it depends on where the student at.
I'm just, I'm just looking at this, like, you know, to sell it, I would want to know that.
Right, yeah, that's a good point.
And then 60% of our masters at AIC, what does it cost for the other 40%? Just for someone, I'm going to invest in this, what's my total investment going to be? You know, I mean, this is all really great, and I'm like, I get excited about it, but I'm like, okay, if I was trying to figure out my path as a professional, what would my total investment have to be? And then that would be very enticing, I think. And how many people do you normally get, so 17 residents will be given that grant? How many are you getting usually?
So they are expanding the residency this year, so this past year, we have...
13.
13, okay.
Okay, so everybody would get it then, if you had 13 again, you'd 17.
Yeah, yes.
That's great.
Yep.
We have 13 Teach Western Mass this year.
Total.
Current people from last year, and then people we have.
I think it's eight new this year.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
And regarding the Urban Teacher Pathway Program, Niles, Mount Hoyoke College has great leaders there that work with our teachers to determine, like, exactly what the cost will be, what their schedule will be. So they would know that before they committed.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
I'm a little bit confused, the candidate, $7,000, the person that's applying for it would pay or...
Yes, the participant in the program would pay for that, yeah.
Mr. Sheehan?
Curious why the commitment on the candidate is different between the Mount Hoyoke program and the Teach Western Mass, considering HPS is actually paying more for Teach Western Mass than they are for Mount Hoyoke? Why the, the years of service commitment is different?
Part of that is to be competitive. So there are other partners in Teach Western Mass who are offering the two years. So we don't want someone to be deterred by having to commit an extra year and having that be a deciding factor. So we tried to stay on par with the other partners who are offering scholarships.
Yeah, I don't know if I agree with that, especially if this year we're paying, for FY20, we're paying the full amount. I mean, are other partners paying the full amount?
Yes, there are.
It just seems like if we're going to have a commitment, I would say that it should probably be something similar. I mean, we're, the district is investing more money into one program and expecting less time, whereas Mount Hoyoke program, it's more money that they're invested, or more, less money.
Can I interrupt Devin? So the Mount Hoyoke program gives them 50% off? Like, if they weren't a teacher in Hoyoke, they wouldn't get 50% off of their tuition? So that's, if you, you know, count the thousands of dollars, it's almost equal.
More of a reason with my point that you're requiring someone to attend the Mount Hoyoke program and make a three-year commitment, whereas you're going to the Teach Western Mass program and you're only making a two-year commitment to the district.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, I can totally understand where you're coming from. I'll be honest, it has been our experience, like, for example, we've offered to pay for people to go back and get their master's degrees for commitments with Elms. And to be honest, people turned us down because they were afraid to make that commitment. And so with that experience, we did decide that this was the right avenue, because other people are offering that lesser commitment, and knowing that we've had even internal candidates who have turned us, turned money away because of that factor. So we really, to make, to get us the highest quality candidate, we don't want anything interfering with our offer. We want to put forth our most competitive offer right up front before they take someone else into consideration. We, I'm happy to discuss more too, and about like what you think is the right answer, like, what is the balance with that?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I know what the balance is, it just, I mean, it just seems like there should be something more aligned. Like, and I think it's a little surprising too that someone would not make a few-year commitment to get a free master's. Like, there's a lot to unpack with what you just said, I mean, with all of that. But it just seems like the programs would have similar, especially because they would have similar stipulations, especially because on paper, the district commitment, the commitment the district's making is so much greater in price for the Teach Western Mass program than it is for the Mount Hoyoke program.
That's, I'm glad, that's, I'm glad you raised it, because this is the first year that we'll have the Teacher Diversification Grant that will pay the full amount, so it's, it's worth us having a follow-up about that. I think it's, you know, that's new to us this year, and so you're right, we're making a bigger financial commitment there, which, you know...
And also last year, the Teacher Diversification Grant did pay for eight people's, for the Urban Teacher Pathway Program total tuition. So whatever they owed, including what we were offering. So that's probably why we have that on here right now, but we can discuss changing it in the future.
And since the Mount Hoyoke program's been the longest, what have been the retention numbers for the people who have completed it, that have stayed in the district? And how long have they stayed in the district after they've completed it?
Yeah, it's a really good question, and I'll be honest, it's probably not something that we've tracked very well over the years. So we can pull that data for you, and it is something that we want to look into so that we can really strengthen these pipelines even more.
Yeah, the first group didn't have a commitment though in Mount Hoyoke, so there, some of those folks did...
I mean, commitment or not, it would just be interesting to see like where people...
I think the retention rates have been good for years to on for Mount Hoyoke.
Off the top of my head, there's probably a handful of people that are no longer with us from the Mount Hoyoke program.
Particularly from that first group where there was not, there wasn't a commitment.
And it was just kicking off too.
I just, one real...
Oh, Mr. Krishan?
Real quick question, has anyone talked to Peoples Bank or Hoyoke Credit Union about maybe trying to work out some kind of, like, down payment assistance for a home? If you, you know, get into something like this, just because that, sometimes like, that's like a good way to...
Right, so we met with, who was it, Dr. Jreig?
Testing me, Kelly.
Sorry, I know I put you on the spot.
We did have this conversation with one of the banks.
Aaron, who, and the, the people that you were associated with, I forget their names. By Hoyoke Now, yes. Some of the, a couple people from that, there, and some mortgage lenders. But we did, we have talked about trying to do that, we just...
Sorry, I think one of the main things with getting something like that done is the district would have to put a residency requirement, most likely, and I don't think you can do that. Right, I mean, because the banks...
Well, I mean, why would it have to be a residency requirement, or couldn't it be an incentive to live in Hoyoke?
Yes, sometimes, something like that can be done with a cooperative of a, of a, of a, of a community bank can put on, like, a loan program that has a forgivable second mortgage. So it's like, like, your down payment money, like, $10,000 is often used in low-income housing programs, where the $10,000 is forgivable, you know, like, 5% per year, so long as you remain a teacher with the Hoyoke School District, you do something like that. I'm just, I'm just trying to think of ways that you might, you know, as far as keeping people in the program. And these are really awesome incentives, you know, really exciting, but just, you know, another idea.
Yeah, I'd love to follow up with some of the people on this committee that know this space really well.
Considering that, I would go after Peoples, because they're the only local lender that portfolios loans. Hoyoke Credit Union doesn't, they sell everything to Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, and that probably won't fly. But, so I would try Peoples first.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Right, we will go on to Teach for America. So Teach for America, similar to the Teach Western Mass residency, it is an alternative accelerated pathway into teaching. Core members do have to give two, a two-year commitment. And the, they provide them with initial, the classes to get initial certification. We actually met with them just today, and they can actually get a master's degree from BU for a total of about $2,000, because they get both an AmeriCorps stipend, and then they also get 33% discount through TFA. So, you know, this is one area where we know, like, there is turnover because of that two-year commitment with TFA. However, Josh Lauren has been a really good partner and started participating in the Paradigm Shift and is committed to starting to do more of this recruitment locally. Another one of their goals is to build communities within the schools. So you have to be a designated site in order to have TFA core members in your building. And the thought behind that is... Um, and the thought behind that is that you're more likely to stay and be retained after the two years if there's a community. That exists within the school, um, so we are gonna be working closely with him to have. TFA participate in our information session for different pipelines into teaching. Um, so we're hoping to see some local recruits there as well. Um, similar to the residency program, also the. This is a national program, so anybody can apply and you have to have your bachelor's degree. Um, with an interest in teaching, um. Our current locations, uh, they're currently Peck, Dunnehue, Dunnehue and Holyoke High School. Um, we are talking about possibly changing those locations in upcoming years, so we'll give you an update if any of that does change. But those would be the three schools you would have to work in if you were to participate in this program. And then the last one. In this section is, um, a partnership, we've really, uh, worked closely with Elms College over the last year. Um, I have to say they've been really flexible and accommodating with us, um, really interested to hear about Holyoke and the challenges we face. Um, and how they can support us in our work. Um, one of the things that they've launched is the Center for Equity in Urban Education. Um, and we are able to offer master's degrees through that program. Um, last year, we did get some money from the teacher diversification grant to support this effort. Um, the students pay twenty-five thousand, I'm sorry, twenty-five hundred dollars per year. Um, HPS also contributes two thousand five hundred eighty dollars. Um, and then they have some local donors who also contribute to that. Um, so again, a very discounted rate for the candidate to get their, uh, master's degree. Which leads to certification.
Mr. Collmar?
Yeah, who selects the schools that are, you go to?
For Teach for America, um, usually we look at where we have alum and, um, we s- we build it around that typically. Um, so currently, we have Rod Hart at Dunnehue, who is supervised by Tiffany Curtis. Um, who are both alum of TFA, um, and then at. Holyoke High School, um, who do we have there that's? I'm forget- yeah, I'm forgetting who it is, but that, that's one of the factors again, just getting, they, they want twenty percent of the school to be. TFA members, um, again, so that people tend to stick around longer than that two-year commitment.
Oh, Mr. Sheehan?
Are they even, you just mentioned they want twenty percent of the school to be TFA members to maintain a site, right? Is that, so, at, does Dunnehue, Peck and Ho- all have twenty percent?
No, um, the high school is probably the biggest ex- exception to that. Um, I, they only have a couple candidates right now, um, again, they've been pretty flexible with us. Um, and. They, they've worked with the leadership in the building to talk about the programming and how it aligns to their vision. Um, so I think they've been flexible and we have talked about over time, if we can't build it up to that twenty percent. How do we filter those people maybe into another site location or develop a new site location where we can build it up? So I, I don't think you need to launch it at twenty percent, but the goal is to build it up to twenty percent.
Are they even, is Teach for America realistically even bringing enough candidates? To Holyoke or to Western Mass that you could ever get three sites at twenty percent in a? Five-year period?
Uh, I think that depends on the retention of them, um, I mean, I wa- we're hiring about five to. Ten a year, um, eh, and with the launch of like an additional location, eh, that's gonna grow. Um, so I think there is potential for that. Their goal this year is thirty-five between Holyoke and Springfield.
And and that concern is why we're also trying to get people internally to participate in the program so that they'll stay. And get a certification within a year.
And what's the retention been after two years?
I don't, again, I don't have that data with me, we can pull that, um, I, I would say in that program that it, it's not.
Not good.
Not good, right.
No, but, uh, one of the things with that program is that, uh, the initial cohort was, was at Peck. And so when the principal of Peck, who was a TFA alum, left to go to a charter school. Many of those original cohort members went with her to that school. So that was the original cohort, and that, where now, we have a lot of, um, TFAers in their second year now. Who will, you know, will be, that'll be a, we'll see how many of them stay. The challenge with TFA is many of the folks are not necessarily commit- something, I shouldn't say many, some are not committed to education. For their career, right, so they wanna go on to do something else, but secondly, many of them are not from the area. Um, they, um, you know, while I will say, the quality has been ver- in my opinion, speaking for myself. The, um, the quality has been very strong in Holyoke of the TFAers we have received. Their, um, the longevity is our biggest concern with them, and it doesn't help our retention numbers if they're in for two and then out after two years. So that's why I think, um, and we don't know, we don't, I don't see them as the long-term strategy, they were great when we had nothing. Um, initially, we didn't have Teach Western Mass, we didn't have, uh, the Mount Ho- program was just launching, we didn't have Elms. I don't see that as a long-term, it would be great, I mean, I think the quality is great, but I, I'm not, I'm not convinced that. In terms of long-term retention, that that's, that that's gonna be, that tho- tho- their candidates are the strategy for that.
Uh, and and I, I'm not gonna get into my own personal thoughts and views of Teach for America right now. But I think that if, especially in the Western Mass region where they're trying to recruit. I think if they're, if they are committed to providing educators in this area, then they really have to recruit differently. And it needs to be a much more localized approach.
I agree.
We agree with that, yeah.
Colleges around here, and I just don't know if, I. We are, Western Mass just is not glamorous for a, uh, TFA recruit, um, having. Been through some of their info sessions and what is promised out, uh, with things or what. It is hard to compete to lure someone to the greater Springfield area when they could also go. To New York City or to, uh.
Miami.
Miami or.
Even Boston, yeah.
Like, it's, it's, so I just, it's, like I said, even aside from my real thoughts about what TFA is, I just don't know if it suits it. Having someone for two years definitely doesn't suit us at all, uh, and it, it hurts a school culture and hurts students more than it, than anything else. But it just, I mean, I, I would be happy if you could pick one school and we could get to fifteen percent. Of, uh, TFA people staying, uh, longer, staying on to a building, I, I think three is really ambitious. Uh, with that and not consolidating it down to, to some of the schools.
Yeah, we just didn't wanna, I think we didn't wanna be boxed into having just one school that was the TFA school, but I also, I mean, again.
It was, I'd probably have problems with that too.
Yeah, right, but we, we, uh, but our strategy has definitely changed, I mean, we fir- TFA was one of the first partners when I first came here that we brought, right? We didn't have, uh, we had no pipelines, uh, as you can see, we, it's a much more regionalized approach, cuz I would agree with you, I mean. It isn't in the best interest of our kids, I do appreciate the talent, um, and the, the influx that they have brought, but I also realize that in the long term, that's not in the best interest. Of our kids, I don't think we should, I think we should still have a relationship with them because I do think it diversifies like the overall. You know, um, it's another pipeline in for, for staff, but I don't think, um, you know, a- as, as we move on, I think the ones you've heard of. Heard about before, and especially this new relationship with Elms, has I think a tremen- you know, tremendous potential.
Promise, yeah.
Yeah, for us as a system.
Yeah, and I would just add that, um, working with TFA, it seems like they. They have kind of had the same realization that, um, you know, it can't work to just recruit someone from California to come to Massachusetts. And expect they're gonna stay for five to ten years, right, like, so they are aware of that, they're participating more in some of the same. Partner work groups that we have, um, and just making a commitment, um, publicly stating that they're going to do more to recruit locally. So it's encouraging, um, and and it feels like it is aligned to the direction that we wanna go. So I think with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Kelly to talk a little bit about, um, our pathway for candidates without a bachelor's degree.
Great, so, um, the first one is, um, Elms again, uh, but, um. For candidates without a bachelor's degree, right now, we have thirty-five paraprofessionals with bachelor's degree, degrees and we almost have. Two hundred, um, paras, so we, we wanna get to the paras that don't have any degree or just an associate's degree. To help them get to a bachelor's degree, and like Beth said, Elms has been very accommodating and has worked with us to try to, um. Get as many paras that are interested in teaching in there, so, um. We were hoping to get funding for this portion by the teacher diversification grant, they chose not to fund this part of the grant, which was a little disappointing. But, um, there is support through the teacher preparation grant, which is, um, not through DESI. So, um, Elms helps the paraprofessionals who are interested in this navigate that grant and, um, begin. We're hoping to find some money to help supplement some of the costs, um, and, um, that's. Still in discussion.
And and just to clarify on that, so we would actually be obligated for the amount listed there, um, for the program. So, Dr. Zurich, Anthony Soto and I are working through to, to really identify since we didn't get that funding, like what we are reasonably. Able to offer in this upcoming year to support candidates going through this. Um, when, the last time we pulled our data, we had approximately thirty-five paraprofessionals with their bachelor's degree. Another thirty-five who had an associate's degree, um, so this is really doubling the, the pool of candidates that we have. Who can enter into these pipelines by addressing this area. Um, also just adding before I hand it back over to Kelly, um, just tho- the reason we're focusing so much on the paraprofessionals is. Um, where our teacher diversification grant is around, I'm sorry, teacher diversification is around twenty-two to twenty-three percent. Our paradiversification is around sixty-five percent, um, like, people of colors, so. That matters in this work, I think also sixty-five percent of our paraprofessionals live here in Holyoke, whereas about. Thirty-five percent of our teachers live here in Holyoke, so this is a pool that we are definitely targeting to enter into these pipelines. That we have and anything you guys can do to help us promote and support, that would be greatly appreciated.
Uh, Ms. Burks?
So I think the programs are great, I'm gonna start off with that, um, this one in particular. You know, I think we do need to look at that student cost of a thousand dollars, our paraprofessionals barely make a livable wage.
Yeah.
Um, and when you're looking at some of these other numbers and the supports that they're getting, the people that we really need. Um, really need that grant funding more, um, than some of those other positions, people with bachelors and masters. You know, have a tendency to bring in more money, our paraprofessionals don't get paid a livable wage, I mean. Being a hundred percent honest, and the fact that we're asking them to come up with a thousand dollars a year. Those are the, tho- and I agree, those are the people that we do need changing our classrooms, cuz.
Yeah, and I can speak a little bit to that and then I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Zurich. Um, so, uh, they have certainly been aware of that, don't forget, none of this takes into consideration any financial aid that's available. So we have talked to Elms College about that and they have said, um, reasonably speaking, like depending on what their salary is, it's likely that they're gonna get something like. A Pell Grant or something along those lines to help reduce even that thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I would just say, um, you're absolutely right, but, um, this is where I, I'm at odds with the state on this. Is, I don't agree, and but, we've had this conversation internally, this is not what we applied for, we got the money for, we, we put everything in, we applied for everything. For all these programs, what we really wanted the money for was for this program, because I agree with you a hundred percent on the, on that. I, I do, and I also think that my opinion about the strategy for recruitment and retention in Western Mass and Holyoke has changed in the last four years and I've. We've, I've had that conversation with the commissioner, that this is in fact, that this is the body of people we need to invest in. While the pay, the payout is, take, it takes longer, right, because they have to complete their bachelor's. It ha- it has the single best chance, in my opinion, of strengthening the workforce here and retaining staff. I think that as a school committee, this is a place where we have to continue to push at the state level too, because I do think. Um, I, I, and, you know, the, the issue for us now is for us to do what you're saying, we're gonna have to pull from our operating budget to invest. I'm not opposed to it because it's not huge money, but it's the right kind of investment, um, uh, because the state grant won't allow us. Or they didn't grant us any money for this program, so, I, I would.
Yeah, I don't wanna take away from how appreciative we are of receiving that grant, but, but this is certainly something that was on our list of priorities. Which is why we're not just leaving it now that we didn't get the funding, we're just trying to find other solutions on, on how to make this work.
I just wanna also say, I hope that you guys are really reaching out and working with paraprofessionals, um, to help. Help them be successful with going through, um, and pushing them forward, because a lot of times, they don't have enough faith in themselves.
Right.
To think that they could really do it, and ninety percent of them are doing it on a daily basis and not getting credit for all the work they do.
Yeah, I'm really glad you brought that up and we will. W- we'll talk a little bit more to that later in the presentation too, um, cuz that's certainly some of the learning that we've had in this work.
Mr. Krishane?
Is there, um, is there a way to spread that cost over the course of a year and maybe take it out of their pay pre-tax, whatever portion? They have to.
Um, I know that we've tried to do that with Teach Western Mass and we couldn't, the attorneys all said that it was illegal, so. But, but again, like, it's certainly not something that, like, we wanna give up on, so we can keep looking into that, it's something that we've thought about. Um, or, or finding other creative ways to maybe like increase their salaries so that they can. Pay that thousand dollars a year.
It sounds like an accountant question, actually.
Yeah, I think they would have to meet with the financial aid office and, and I bet they wouldn't even end up paying a thousand dollars after they did that, like. Beth said there's grants available, um, especially when you have a low income, to help them with that. And these figures are from Elms and it's like an estimate, so. I'm pretty sure that they would be able to support them and they wouldn't end up paying a thousand dollars.
Mr. Sheehan? Sorry.
Why isn't the Teach grant being offered for Elms?
It is. Oh, not the Teach grant isn't because you have to be, um, you have to have a bachelor's degree, I believe.
No, it's for a baccalaureate program as well, it's baccalaureate, post-baccalaureate or master's program.
Oh, so. It could have something to do with the teacher preparation grant, I don't know if you qualify for both, is that?
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I think that that's something, I mean, that would.
When we talked to Elms, they didn't think that the Teach grant was applicable to this group that we were, um, trying to fund. But the teacher, paraprofessional teacher preparation grant is, which is more money than that, because this is seventy-five hundred dollars a year, the Teach grant, I believe, is just. Thirty-five hundred dollars a year, and since, yeah, that's total for two years, for the Urban Teacher Pathway Program, it's two years, so it's seven thousand.
Yeah. And I would also like to learn more about this whole not being able to do payroll deductions too, to cover that. Uh, like Mr. Krishane brought up, like that, I, I think I know why that was said, but I would like to know what the. Attorney's reasonings are for helping these people and not being able to do, uh, standard payroll deduction for those.
It, and it actually wasn't our attorneys, it was their attorneys who said that it couldn't be done, so, um, we can certainly.
The Elms attorneys?
No, um, t- we tried it with Teach Western Mass.
Okay.
Um, so we can look into it and get another opinion on that.
Well, I, I'm assuming they would want the, the district to be a, basically be able to support it. If the person quits or something and doesn't have the additional payroll deductions coming out, is my, what I'm guessing, is that they could lose. Out on it if we were making payments to them every, on a twenty-six week schedule, is my guess. Why their attorneys wouldn't want it, because if someone bailed in the middle of the program, then they don't get paid their full fee, but I mean, at least for this. For the para one, I mean, it, it's different, there's, Mrs. Burke said, like, paras are different than people that are teaching. Um, so I mean, it could be something that is made specifically for this program to incentivize a program like that, that maybe you could get it done as a. A standard payroll deduction.
Yeah, we'll certainly look into that and the Teach grant for this program as well. And with that.
Any other questions?
Hand it back over to Kelly to continue.
All right, so student-to-teacher and staff development, um, the student-to-teacher piece is very exciting to me because. I feel like if we were able to do this five years ago, we would have had. we would have had thirty teachers in the classroom right now. So, Generation Teach is one of the programs that allows our high school students to teach middle school students along with some other college students. And our teachers are able to be their coaches. So, it gives our teachers a leadership opportunity, it gives our students a teaching opportunity, and our middle school students get to have fun. So, we use Generation Teach to try to recruit college students to work in Holyoke when they complete their education. We've had a couple of our high school students participate and I think they've been some of the best teachers. And so, the requirements is that they represent the diversity and excellence of the students and communities we serve, which is why our high school students are perfect. The students get a stipend for working and our teachers, who are coaches, get a stipend also. And they work with our middle school students, I think I said that. So, the other, last year, we started the Future Teachers Signing Day. It's similar to a sports signing day, where students who want to be teachers get recognized for their commitment to teaching, not necessarily committing to Holyoke, but we encourage them to commit to Holyoke by offering them a step up on our compensation system if they do return to Holyoke and we promise them placement and a student teaching opportunity. And we're planning on doing that again this year. Did you want to say anything else about that, Dr. Zarek?
No, just make sure you click the slides there, yeah.
Thank you. I should have given it to Beth.
No, no, that's right.
And then, recently, through the Teacher Diversification Grant, we were able to start planning UMass Grow Your Own for our future teachers in Holyoke. And we're actually meeting Friday to firm up some of the details. We're excited to partner with UMass and have a Future Teachers Club where they'll meet regularly. We haven't determined the amount of times they'll meet after school, but it'll most likely be weekly or bi-weekly. They'll have a course in the spring connected to Ethnic Studies, where they will receive graduate, college credits that are transferable to a few colleges. And they will also visit UMass frequently to get the college experience. And there'll be a mentor that'll work with them to determine whether or not they want to be a teacher, what content area they want to be in, and support any questions they may have, along with one of the Holyoke High School teachers running the Future Teachers Club. Did I miss anything, Beth?
I think just acknowledging that like year one is really about the planning with UMass. It's a heavy lift to roll something like this out, where they're gonna have the dual enrollment, making sure it doesn't interfere with their high school experience while they're gaining that experience at UMass.
And we're also hoping to incorporate Generation Teach. So, we're hoping these future teachers get to teach this summer in Generation Teach and tie that into what they're learning at UMass. They're trying to plan a one-credit course from that experience, so that's exciting.
Oh, Ms. Burke, sorry.
Hey, so I have more questions.
Yeah.
I'm new, so I'm totally.
All right, ask away.
So, how much does Generation Teach cost us as a district? What does it cost to have them in?
It has varied from year to year. This year, to run the whole summer program, it's a hundred fifty for us, I believe, is the overall cost.
Yeah, we paid for it and, so first of all, it does, it is our summer school, it is a summer school program. And so, we use our summer funding for that. At different times, we've used the turnaround money has funded this. And I'm not sure where we're gonna get the funding exactly for this year, whether it's our operating budget or turnaround money, but that's what, yeah, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand.
And then, my next question is, for the Generation Teach, it says undergraduate and high school students. Like, I think this is, I think this is cool for our high school students to recommend. Is there a difference in the stipend, like for the kids that are majoring in an education in college now?
No, there's not a difference.
It's the same stipend.
Yeah, and I forgot to mention that they get an intensive two-week training prior to the start of the summer program.
And are we going out to the local colleges to speak to all of the ed majors at those colleges?
So, they do have a recruiter that does go to colleges to speak to ed majors, not ed majors. They're hoping they get people that want to begin teaching that weren't originally thinking about it and they have this experience and it changes their mind, which we should invite you to the panel that they do in the summer. We get to question the middle school students and the teachers, the high school or undergraduates. And they tell us about their experience and whether or not they're gonna teach or not.
They have a local director who's from Holyoke, actually.
Yeah, she graduated from here, Dean.
Yep, and she does the recruiting between now, I would assume, and when the summer program starts.
So, are we taking the students that from Generation Teach and are we rolling them into these rest of these programs that you guys have?
So, we're hoping to, yeah.
That's the hope.
Yes.
Trying hard, it, we only have one person right now, because Generation Teach started maybe two years ago. We have one person that is now a teacher at Sullivan that began at Generation Teach. But it's not as strong of the connection as we want to make yet.
It's amazing, because I know at least four students, from when I worked at Sullivan School, for instance, that are now Holyoke Public School teachers that have just graduated college, you know, within the last year or two. And I just think like if we had done more, they'd probably be walking away with less student loans. And they're already serving our district and they don't want to go anywhere. So, just thinking like that, that would be phenomenal. We lost, I mean, they're here and they're teaching, but we lost, you know, the ability to help them back.
Yeah, it'd also be great if you, I mean, I know, I just happen to know you have some college-age children or, and to be able to spread the word to that group, because those are the people we want. And we don't always know, we don't do a strong enough job of tracking who from like, who's juniors and seniors in college who are from Holyoke and want to teach in our schools, making sure that we're making the connection to bring them back here. And Generation Teach is a great way to get them a little taste of it and if they want to.
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is actually doing that job for us, because they're actually recruiting. They were at my daughter's college, because my daughter is now a med, ed major in her junior year, about to graduate, and she's in an accelerated program. And the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed was selling Holyoke.
Oh, was it for the Inspired Program?
Uh, no, they just asked for a meet and greet with the students and actually, Mr. Riley was there in a group of his cohorts, recruiting students from her college that are all ed majors and recruiting for Holyoke as well, so.
We have some teachers that are in Holyoke, like Ms. Banks at Sullivan School, I think many of you know Lori Banks. She's a fellow who does, she does that work for the department in, not in the, not in the South Shore, but that does it at UMass, or I don't know, Kelly, where else did they go?
She visits several different colleges. Last year, it was just her, but now we have two Inspired Fellows. Janaya Little, I believe her last name is. Yeah, and they go to local colleges and I'm assuming other fairs and stuff like that and try to turn non-education majors into education majors or education majors to come to Holyoke.
They also, the department has a campaign right now going to really try to change the narrative around teaching, where I think it's kind of had like a negative story in the past few years. They're really trying to change that. So, there's some exciting things going on at the state level too, to get more interest in teaching.
So, is your daughter gonna come teach, Becky?
I would love if you could recruit her, because that'd be great to get her back in this area. But.
Probably call her tomorrow.
I'll call her tomorrow.
I'll Facebook her number.
I'd love if you could recruit her back this way, but.
And the four teachers that you're talking about, they can always take advantage of the Urban Teacher Pathway Program to get their masters.
They're already current Holyoke Public School teachers.
Yeah, so our current, some of our current teachers are taking that because they might have a waiver. Or they might want to change to Special Education or ELL. Yeah.
I think you're going the wrong direction.
So.
I can go, I think we're here.
Yeah, so, I'll let, yeah, I'll let Beth say this. Becky, you'll be interested in, because this speaks to the point you made earlier.
Yes, so also at that Diversity Network where we were talking with Mark Swager and Stephen Mogell, one of our big concerns is that we've had, for example, the Urban Teacher Pathway for many years now. We typically budget for about eight slots every year and we have not filled all of those slots any years. So, we were trying to dig into that a little bit more and what we really came up with is there is this trust and confidence issue that exists. So, this is something that I think brings me a lot of joy in my work and something we're really focused on this year is really developing this advanced professional development track for paraprofessionals. This is being developed currently. The concept that we have right now is that they will receive robust professional development courses that relate to teaching to help smooth that transition from being a paraprofessional to a classroom teacher. Being a teacher is hard, it's extremely hard in your first year. So, anything we can do to build that skill set and build their confidence to make that transition is gonna be really important in this work. So, our idea is they have this professional development and then they kind, they work in the summer program and they'll teach some portion every single week, whether it's like one lesson a week where they have like a teacher to provide them feedback, help them prepare for it. So, they're really getting hands-on experience without having to make any sort of commitment, right? Because I think right now, there's like this fear like, I'm gonna lose my position, I have to take this one, I don't know if I'm gonna be successful in it. So, we're trying to help them explore their opportunities and if they decide that they don't want to be a teacher, it's still gonna benefit them in their current role. So, the idea behind this too is that we all agree that it has to be a paid opportunity. So, the time that they're gonna be spending, summer school has always been paid, but additionally, we're looking to pay them for all of the professional development hours and then finding coaches to pay throughout the school year to help them continue that work in the following school year and having a specialized track during the district PD days for them to attend. So, that moves us on to, really, we just have this slide to kind of summarize a lot of work. So, as you'll see, like our thought right now is really about like the development of our staff. We're starting on as early as like our paraprofessional positions and really thinking about that as a way to like move up through the pipeline. And then, from there, as you've seen in probably the collective bargaining agreements and throughout other presentations, we are developing a lot of other teacher leadership opportunities within the district. Some of our major ones are listed here, such as the Advanced Teacher, which is really designed right now to be like a lab classroom, where our novice teachers can go in and observe best practices and debrief and really build their own skill set. The Master Teacher is a role that we will be rolling out for this next school year. This one will only be in the classroom a certain percentage of the time, but, and we'll focus more on like coaching, whether it be novice teachers or teachers who may be struggling in certain areas, to really elevate the quality of practice. And then, our academy leads at the high school, who are doing a lot with the high school redesign. There's pages of opportunities that we actually create every single year that give different leadership opportunities, like the instructional leadership team in each building and other opportunities like that.
That was quite the presentation. I mean, no, you guys offer a lot of opportunities. Does anybody have any questions? Well, thank you guys so much for bringing this to us, great presentation.
One more thing, I hope Mike can share this on the screen for anyone who wants to help us recruit.
And if you have, if you know of people, send them to Kelly. You know, if you have people that are interested, she's the one-stop shop that can answer all these questions. I know it gets a little confusing of each of the models, but please, if you know quality people, we want them working in our schools. So, please, you know, Kelly's the, that's why her role exists, to be that ambassador. She does a great job at it.
I think you all know how to get ahold of me too.
No, actually, on TV Day, don't, so go ahead and give your four-one-three.
My cellphone?
No.
So, I can be emailed at kcurran, K-C-U-R-R-A-N, at hps.holyoke MA US.
Excellent, well, thank you again for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Good job.
Awesome, moving along on to Superintendent Receiver Correspondence.
Yes, so I'll be, I'll try to, I have a number of things I just want to touch on that I think are pretty important. One, next meeting, we are gonna talk, I'm gonna introduce the new Director of Social, Emotional and Behavioral Learning. He wasn't able to be here tonight, because it was his wife's fortieth birthday, or birthday, I shouldn't be giving ages out, sorry. But.
It's already there.
It's already out there, but I want him to, I want him to, I want you all to have a chance to meet him and ask him questions. He has been, he has visited every school now in the last, since we got back, so, and to understand what some of the challenges are around social, emotional learning in each school. We're also gonna follow up on the high schools. If you remember, two meetings ago, we talked about questions around providing parents with information around grades and then we also talked about some of the achievement data, so we're gonna do that at the next meeting. The, around the Puerto Rican, the earthquake in Puerto Rico, we are meeting as a leadership team, now that we have a chief of social, emotional and behavioral learning, we have a point person that can help us with coordinating our response. The high school has a meeting in the morning. They have, many of the newcomers in the newcomer academy are profoundly affected by the earthquake, because their families are there, they recently, their recent arrivals, they also have the trauma of having just left after the hurricane. So, the high school has a meeting and then some of their representatives are gonna come to the district level. We're gonna talk about what our support efforts are gonna look like district-wide. So, I just wanted to, I did send you a copy of the note I sent out to teachers today. The, one thing that Liz and I discussed that I wanted you to be aware is, we are gonna start translating the minutes of these meetings into Spanish, beginning with this meeting, Liz? Okay, now that we have a more evolved and stronger translation interpretation department, we have a mechanism by which we can do that. And so, we're gonna begin posting the minutes in both languages. So, thank you for Liz, to Liz for taking that on. I do want to talk about the Student Opportunity Act, getting a lot of questions about, when are we gonna know? How are we gonna, how is this gonna be rolled out? So, I was just informed, the governor's budget comes out, I believe, January twenty-third. Devin may know the exact date, is that the right date? So, in the days following that, the Department of Ed is going to release the template that each district has to fill out around, and the checklist. And that's not just for receivership districts, that's for any district that's receiving significant amount of funds, like we are.
I thought that was getting released Friday.
I was told by somebody today at the department that it's not gonna be till after, but you may have other information.
I just thought it was.
Associate Commissioner told me, oh, he's gonna talk about it at the Urban Zoo. But the actual template, we're gonna, I'm told the final template will be released after that. I do expect to set up some community engagement opportunities for the public and I would ask that you help me to get people to attend who have ideas about, you know, I want to get input from the community about ways, about how to spend the money, yeah. I mean, there's about eight hundred different ways, but I think part of the, I do believe one of the requirements is to engage the community anyway, but regardless of the fact, I think that's something we need to do. So, just to keep that on your radar, probably February, beginning of February before break and then maybe do two different forums around that. The Arts Task Force, we launched an Arts Task Force. We have a professional facilitator, Aaron Vega was instrumental in helping get this off the ground. We have a really strong group of people who are educators in the system, we have funders, we have higher ed folks, we have all kinds of arts organizations there. We need a school committee rep there, I'd love to have a school committee rep there. If you're interested, you don't have to tell me now, please send me an email, but I think it's important that we have a voice at the table from the school committee at these sessions. Again, this is being done by the woman who did the Berkshire Arts Plan. Again, this is prof- this is being done by the woman who did the Berkshire Arts Plan, very reputable. This is going to be, and we're, we're working to pr- develop a strategic plan for the arts in the Holyoke Public Schools. And Aaron and I are the co-chairs. Really, Aaron is the, I have no arts background, but I know it's important. Um, and I think, and I, we have a lot of our educators um, who have been saying all along, like, we don't have a strong pipeline into the high school around arts. And I think all of you know, it's inconsistent, it's choppy. Um, and some kids get good experiences, some do not. Um, so please let me know if you're interested. Um, I did know, there is a job posting here for the uh, district physician. We are reposting that position. We do not have a current contract with our um, physician and we do feel like the role can be stronger, more uh, and have more connection to our work and to the community's work. Um, and so we're also looking about whether the stipend is enough. It's been five thousand for a while. I haven't touched this at all since I've been here. We've just had the same physician and we've offered the same stipend, but um, we're now in a, we're now learning that uh, we now believe that the role can do more, and so we're posting um, uh, the position. Um, I would note that we are partnering with the Sandy Hook Promise uh, around um, uh, ending isolation, social isolate, isolation for students. They are, they, they started after the Sandy Hook tragedy around um, examining um, school connectiveness for people that um, you know, feel um, isolated in school and they are coming and presenting to all sixth to 12th graders January 13th through 15th in the Holyoke Public Schools. Letters are going out to families if they haven't just explaining what it is. I should have provided a copy. I will provide you with a copy of what that looks like. Um, and um, the dual language grant we just got awarded um, is um, helpful, but we are, I have a meeting tomorrow with the superintendent of Amherst Public Schools and the dean of education at UMass. Um, we are, they are offering this course that we, our teachers are um, who are dual language teachers have to get recertified, have to get a, a, a new endorsement to teach dual language. It is highly involved and their teachers are very concerned about the requirements and not happy about the requirements. Um, we have a grant that allows us to subsidize the cost of the course, but the course is very involved. And it's another barrier to getting teachers, um, you know, what they need. And it's going to, uh, we believe it's going to de- uh, um, disincentivize folks to want to teach dual language because it's adding another layer to the requirement. Um, the other, so we are working on, I think Mike Morris, superintendent there, feels the same way. But we are, so we are working with the dean. We expect that, that UMass is, I think, overchar- we believe is overcharging for the course. Also, we don't want our teachers to have to pay anything out of pocket. And we'd also like to see it more um, online than it is like actual seat time, which is very inconvenient for teachers. So teach, there is um, an outcry from some of our staff. Um, especially ones that have been teaching dual language. Um, yes, question?
So this is a news, so like all of our current staff now have to get this and then incoming staff for next year?
They either have to pass a test, which has not been developed yet, or they have to um, take courses, which we now, we subsidize, but it's six, right now, it's six courses.
Starting when?
Um, I think they have a grace period of a couple of, like, two years to do this, but it's, I'm not, I'm concerned and I have raised my concern. The other thing, just I want to give you the full picture of my concerns. That's one. The other is, we have some teachers now who are teaching on the Spanish, um, the Spanish side of the dual language who do not, will never pass the teacher test. Because their English isn't strong enough, but they don't have to teach in English, right? So we have a number, uh, we have a few teachers who are excellent at what they do. Some of you know who they are, but they do not ever have to teach in English. They only have to teach in Spanish. My concern about those teachers is that the requirement for them to be a teacher in Massachusetts is to pass the teacher test. They'll pass any endorsement ta- I mean, the uh, the bilingual endorsement, they can certainly pass a test that they can teach in Spanish, but they will not be able to pass the teacher.
There's, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, don't allow, I, I don't want to generalize by some of the teachers that you're talking about, but many of them probably had the old T B E license, right?
Now, some of them are recent arrivals from um, um, so we have some from Puerto Rico. Uh, we have a teacher I know from Columbia who's excellent, who um, you know, her Spanish is impeccable and I would want her teaching my child Spanish.
But, so I thought, so if you had an old T B E license that got converted over, right?
You could, that, but very, very few of our teachers have that old T B E license.
Didn't a foreign language license also allow you to?
Um, I don't think the foreign language license does allow you to, no, no, no. Um, so the problem is for that, that, and then there's some of our teachers who are former um, ESL teachers in the system are saying that the coursework is duplicative of what they've already taken with the S E I endorsement. So I, 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 rest assured, I, we met with the teachers, they shared all their concerns and we're advocating, but it is, it is baked in the, the um, the law, um, the uh, the uh, the bilingual ed law, or I'm sorry, the um, yeah, the bilingual ed law that requires um, these, this coursework. It is a pro- it's going to be a problem for our teachers. Um, so it's just something to be aware of.
Well, out of the eight hundred ideas, there you go. Boom.
In terms of, right, right.
I mean, we already have a hard time recruiting for dual language.
Yes, yes, exactly. And s- and their ques- the question they're asking is why would we want to teach dual language if we know that it's that much more involved to become a dual language teacher, even though they love their job, they love the work that they do? But it's a fair question for them to ask.
Ms. Burks?
Hit the same issue though with our um, language learners that are taking an M-CAS that's in English, but it should really be in Spanish for them.
For the, you mean for, same as for teachers, yeah, who are, yeah. Well, again, I'm, my concern with the teachers is they do, we're, we're not asking them to teach in English. We're asking them to teach only in Spanish. And we, and in some ways, in my, it is better that they, because the purity of their Spanish is so strong that it's um, it's good for kids who are developing their second language, Spanish, so. Um, I will conclude, that concludes my comments.
What happened with the school physician medical consultant role and responsibilities?
I talked about that.
You did? Oops. Well, then I have a question.
Okay.
Really quick, just, and I, and I pointed it out to you, um, when we're looking at regular basis, it really doesn't emphasize a specific timeframe when the consultation will occur and when they will be meeting with the director of health. So it has to be more clear. Is it going to be quarterly? Is it going to be monthly? Is it going to be twice a year?
Yep.
Whatever the case may be. And then I see here the school health advisory council, you're asking for someone for the ass- arts task force, um, maybe someone for the school health advisory council from the school committee, so if anybody's interested.
You're suggesting that a school committee member be on that committee?
Yep. Huh?
No, not.
No. And um, just to let, remind um, for the joint school committee, city council, uh, any school committee member that is interested, please let me, send me an email um, so that we can appoint someone as soon as possible, so by Friday. Um, either email, phone, text, SOS, whichever the case may be, um, for that. And um, oh, could you give us an update as to what we're doing in regards to the middle school project? Um, aren't we supposed to, by January twenty-fifth?
Devin, Devin would like to take that one.
Thank you. Uh, actually, before I take that, I just wanted to mention something about, um, Dr. Zreck mentioned the Sandy Hook Promise. And just so people are aware, if anyone's watching at home, or for all of you if you have questions about it, the programs that they're doing with children are not focused at all about trauma around that. And I know there's been a lot of questions with that because the Sandy Hook Promise actually has many different topics they talk about. These are focused more about students being other observers to students, like, do you need a friend? Are you in isolation? Things like that. So it's not a, um, because they off, if you go to the Sandy Hook Promise website, there's many different things they talk about, but the ones they're offering to school districts in Massachusetts are focused more on um, things like buddy benches and different things like that to, if you see a kid sitting alone in the cafeteria, and I'm really minimalizing the efforts, but that's what it's about. So the, the school building project, um, Dr. Zreck, the mayor, um, Councilor McGee, Lisi and Lisi, and I all met uh, yesterday, it seems, much longer ago, but uh, uh, we met yesterday and we followed up on a, on a follow-up on a message that Dr. Zreck had received from the MSBA uh, needing some financial information from the city. So once the city provides the financial information uh, to the MSBA, we'll kind of know what some options are. Um, right now, the MSBA process, as it's defined in their regulations, is that anyone who wants to submit a project submits a statement of interest between uh, January eighth and October eighth, and then it's acted upon uh, after that at some point. Um, we are um, hoping that there might be a different uh, method for us to take, given the work that was already put into it, but there's just some questions that the MSBA needs first before they even want to get into those kind of discussions and what we're going to do. Uh, and I know that's really not a great update and I don't know if you can add anything else to it, but it-
Yeah, the only thing is the window opens tomorrow, right? For the uh, statement of interest between tomorrow and April, is it April eighth? Um, but that, you know, we're waiting, I, 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 for our application to go in, uh, we need more gu- direction and we've been told um, to wait till we get that direction. And once the um, school building authority has our financials, um, they're going to be able to then direct us on where we go. I did follow up after the meeting with the MSBA yesterday. Just to, I want to keep the communication between us um, constant. Um, and they appreciated the fact that we met and I explained to them what was discussed. And so um, you know, I hope that in our February meeting, we have an update, um, because the window is, the window's now. And I, I, you know, we're not, I mean, one of my goals before I transition away is to have the middle school pla- a plan uh, to, around where we're going with our middle school buildings. So um, I feel a tremendous, tremendous sense of urgency around that.
And, and I think one thing that's important, I mean, we, we went through everything in the fall and we don't need to rehash that, but I think it's, it's well-known that the, the voters had said that that the project was not going to go through with a debt exclusion. So no matter what the project is, this, I believe, and this is me speaking from everything that I hear, that a project needs to be um,
Yep.
fully funded and bonded for within the levy limit of the city uh, without having to go for a vote of whatever that may look like. I mean, that was, I, I believe that that was loud and clear with that. So that's some of the financial information that the um, the city has to provide to the MSBA uh, in terms of uh, what the city is able to do within uh, our existing confines, I would say. I, I think that's how we all left that meeting, too.
Yeah, that's fair.
Mr. Kushein?
So, I mean, what does it take to make this happen with regard to pressure? You had two city councillors in the room. Did they offer, you know, a solution for us? Is there something that they can propose and form or?
Well, there's no, th- there's no solution we're looking for right now. And give me just one second and I will tell you exactly what the um, MSBA asked for.
What I, I don't mean the solution to how we, our approval uh, is, I, I mean, getting these, getting our city to provide the information that was requested. How do we, how can we push that issue?
Right, so this is, what the MSBA is looking for prior to um, e- even any information of what the process is going to look like is they need clarity and documentation to the MSBA regarding how much the city of Hoyoke can contribute to a building project, given its current financial constraints. Two, ensure that the aforementioned documentation was reviewed and endorsed by the Division of Local Services prior to sharing with the MSBA. And three, set up a time with an MSBA leadership in the next three to four weeks to review and discuss the financial informa- information provided.
So does that mean that has to go through um, the city council? Um?
So there, there's no commitment to anything. This is, this is, the MSBA is asking for fact-finding and they want facts presented to them. After they get those facts, they will be able to inform us whether there could be a different process that we go through. Um, some people call it an expedited process. I'm not going to call anything expedited, but a alternative process that we can go through or the normal submission process. Um, I believe a statement of interest regardless still gets approved by the city council before it's submitted. So I do not imagine either process that we go through, whether it's an alternative process or the traditional process, that there wouldn't be a step of having to at least go to the city council and ask for submission of that. Um, just that, that statement of interest or whatever it may be. So once those, that information is provided by the city of Hoyoke and the Mass School Building Authority, they will inform us what would be the best option for us to take if, if there truly is an option and not just the one that's established by regulation.
What was the second, it was, how much can we contribute? And then number two?
Certified by Division of Local Services, right? Is that what it was, Steve?
Certified by who?
Division of Local Services is a, the government branch that kind of looks over all the municipalities and looks over all the finances. So they, we report everything out to them uh, financially and they just review it and say, yes, I mean, it's a, it's their, I, I mean, I think they're just, they're auditor. I mean, they, they, that's their job to make sure that everything is accurate. I mean, it's just, yep, everything looks good and they sign off on it. Right, I mean, that was the process you thought they were taking, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
So the, the city needs to show through their financials that they would have the ability um, to bond for some sort of school construction uh, and a school construction project without having to um, do a debt exclusion again. I mean, we know that, that failed. I mean, that, that is not the will of the voters. So I mean, they're, they need to know that the city can financially afford within the, the confines of the city budget and taking into account, I mean, there's things that they've taken into account. There, there's debt that will come off of, that, that we will lose in the next couple of years. There is um, potential for uh, money from the cannabis industry that has not been worked into anything with the financials yet. So there's a, a big picture that needs to be looked at um, with it, that, for the city of how they can uh, how they can do this. I, I mean, sure, I, I mean, I don't know, I think it's just the process. I mean, there, the, the, the city, if, if there is the, the um, desire to build um, new educational facilities, I mean, the city needs to show that they can provide the funding to, to do that.
Hey, is there, um, there was um, a- as we, as we neared the vote, there was a proposal or offer by Desi to allow us to um, lower our uh, contribution um, under the net school spending formula. Is that something that would also go into these figures?
That's something I believe yesterday came up that we'd have to factor in. It obviously, I mean, it-
Not the same amount.
It may not be the same amount, like, I mean, but that is something that needs to be look, i- is, along with looking at things like what debt is coming off of, of the roles in the next couple of years, that is another factor of what money can be contributed in. It's one of many different things they have to look at. And this is something that's done between the city treasurer, the city auditor, the tax collector, stand revenues, and also bringing in sender McNerney from Hilltop Securities, who ma- who does the financial forecasting or, and bond forecasting for the city to say that this is where we are.
Wait, what could we do to put some pressure on to make this happen? I mean, it's-
I, I don't, I, I don't think there's a, a pressure point at this point unless, Steve, unless you think differently, it's just the mayor's office told us yesterday that, and the mayor's chief of staff, that they are going to start compiling this information and working with the, the treasurer, the tax collector, the auditor and sender to get this together. They're also going to reach out to uh, Division of Local Services, who I think is actually they're meeting with Thursday? Is that what they said? Either Thursday this week or Thursday the next week?
Yeah, some point in the next few days, yeah.
Within the next two weeks, whoever our contact is with the Division of Local Services, who has to kind of give the the rubber stamp or whatever it may be to this information, they actually have a meeting already. So I mean, this, this isn't anything that isn't occurring. There, there are things that are going on. Um, and it just so happened yesterday, we were all going to be together, so it was a prime time. Oh, and Aaron Vega was there as well to come together and meet about this, this topic and to see where it's going with next steps.
Okay.
And we'll keep- And we'll keep getting, um, information monthly and.
Okay. Ideally, we would have it and we could be submitting our proposal tomorrow.
Yes, right.
I mean, yes.
We need that, we need that, we need that to happen as soon as possible.
Right, okay. So if we don't see it happening, then the time to go.
And, and just so the, the traditional submission, a submission that occurs between Janu- uh, in the normal statement of interest period, typically by the School Building Authority is not acted upon until their December meeting. So just, I mean, that's the historical reference of a normal statement of interest process. Like when Steve had to go in December and was there for the withdrawal meeting, the other districts that were being accepted into the process were there that were getting accepted into the process. So I mean, it, it's, that's the typical process. You submit January to April and then it's voted on at the December meeting.
Oh, Ms. Brunel?
Do we know what plan we'd even be submitting?
So none of that is even, I mean, that came up yesterday, but it really, there's nothing we can do until we have the finances.
Right.
Because there's, uh, a million different factors that go into, once the finances are there. I mean, it, it's the, the plan that Desi has approved to turn around, that MSBA says that works, that the district says that works, is that we need middle schools. That is the educational goals and plans of the city. What we can finance to be able to accomplish that goal, we would need to come back together. So it's really, let's find out what the finances are, let's find out what, what the MSBA is doing to continue to help us, if there's an alternative route to go on or the normal route, and then see from there. I mean, it's, it's a lot of waiting and seeing and in, nowhere in any of this is anything not occurring or need pressure on at this point. There's no, I don't believe there's any phone calls that need to be made or anything that needs to be done to accelerate anything. It's, it's moving along the process. It's just moving along the process.
All right, well, any other new business? Nope, old business? Oh, Mr. Collmore.
Yeah, I'd like to really thank the, uh, students and the staff at the Y M White School for their performance in, at the inauguration. It was really an inspiring thing for our, show our, our students off to the public, what, what's going on in our school system. And also to Mark Todd and his core group. And I think, you know, we as a group should send a letter thanking them for, uh, what they've done for us.
Absolutely. Liz? Liz got it. Excellent. Uh, Ms. Burks?
I just want to congratulate Jack Shay on getting into Harvard High School, I senior, um, which I think it's just important to acknowledge that. He did a lot of hard work, um, and he's an amazing kid. And also Trish Harridan, who is currently at Hoyoke High School senior, um, is actually now one of the Hoyoke Colleen's. So I would like to congratulate her as well.
And Natalie Mako works at Hoyoke High, who is also one of the Colleens, who's a recent graduate of Hoyoke High, I think, as well.
Excellent.
Trish, I think, sang yesterday at, uh, City Hall too, with the, uh, Madrigals.
And I saw in here, um, oh my God, special education parent advisory meeting. Dr. Zrak, you want to help me with the date?
Uh, the date is not this Wednesday, it's the next Wednesday. I gotta. Oh.
Aw, man. It's the 22nd. That's when it is. So it's the 22nd at Enlace, at 6:00 P M., right? Excellent. So no old business, um, any announcements? No announcements? Um, anybody a motion to adjourn? All right, motion and seconded, so meeting adjourned at eight twelve.